Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Environment Sustainability Committee Meeting Number Seven of 2023 on the 10th of August. Checking council attendance, I have all committee members here except for councillor Madison, who has provided an apology. So I'll move that a leave of absence be granted to councillor Jacob Madison from the Environment Sustainability Committee meeting on 10th of August 2023. Do I have a second? No, thank you councillor Quinsman. All those in favour? Unanimous and carried, thank you. Acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Are there any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda? No, we'll move on to item one, which is business outstanding. This is an update on discussions with Queensland Department of Environment and Science regarding national parks in the Ipswich local government area. This report is concerning the matter raised in the council ordinary meeting on Thursday, the 18th of November 2021, and subsequently discussed at the Environment Sustainability Committee on 9th of February 2023 regarding the proposal to update the status of White Rock, Spring Mountain Conservation Estate to national park, and subsequent ongoing discussions with the Queensland Department of Environment and Science around alternative ventures and suitable directions. May I call forward an appropriate officer?
Thank you Chair, Mayor councillors, Phil Smith, manager of natural environment.
Thank you, Mr Smith. I know it is detailed in, the report is detailed in the agenda, however, could you give a brief outline and conclusion to the matter?
Can do, thank you. Yes, so as mentioned, there was a motion to, I suppose, propose that White Rock Conservation Estate be considered to upgrade to a national park status. We made contact with the relevant department at the time through a formal, formal letter, and then that led to discussions with officers in the Department of Environment and Science, Queensland Park and Wildlife Services. Through those discussions, they outlined a few considerations around what the change in tenure would mean for us as a council and for them, and also highlighted what their considerations or what their wants and drivers are in terms of forming new national parks. They are, I suppose, constantly looking for opportunities to develop and create new national parks, but their drivers and what they're looking for are generally around large regional corridors, connectors and those kind of things. Specifically, they mentioned the main range, an extension of that national park. White Rock, whilst it's important locally, very important locally and forms part of those regional corridors, wasn't necessarily the scale and location that they'd be looking for. The others matters that they considered and discussed were around, as a national park, there's potentially more constraints for users in regards to what can and can't be done, and how that may impact on current user groups that have an expectation that certain things can be done or can't be done. With that in mind, there was, I suppose, little active interest from their part to pursue the changes status of White Rock. And from our perspective, I think there's a lot of values to be maintained and held in keeping it as, under its current status and managed by council. One of the big considerations is that potentially it would be a change in tenure. A lot of that land, whilst some of it is currently state owned and managed in trust by council, a large proportion of it is freehold land that we've obtained through the EnviroPlan levy, and we'd potentially be changing that tenure over to state, so essentially be giving it away. And in doing so, we lose a lot of the management controls and options around how we activate it, what we do, the conservation works there. And also, given that there's a lot of development in that space, there's a lot of work being carried out with developers and managing those interfaces at the moment around White Rock and the development. Potentially it would make that quite complex as well. So a lot of considerations, but fundamentally, you know, not really that much interest from state, and I think there's benefits to us to keep that as a current status as it is.
Yes, so, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that the environmental values and the, particularly the conservation of specifically White Rock and Spring Mountain areas, this council believes that those outcomes will be better achieved with retention of that asset by Ipswich City Council.
Presently, yeah, I think that the, the funding and resource constraints that state have as well at the moment in terms of managing land, we, we see the, I suppose, that we see the result of that in some of the land that they own within our region already. They're not particularly well resourced, they haven't got heaps of money, much like us, and many levels of government. So there's a risk that in handing it over that we achieve potentially lesser outcomes, again, relative to the rest of the state-owned national park or state-managed national parks. It wouldn't necessarily be a priority for state, they've got some fantastic, large national parks, so therefore we can't necessarily insist or be sure that it would be a maintenance priority for investment for them, whereas from our perspective, relative to the rest of the areas in Ipswich, it maintains one of probably two or three top priorities for council. And through the EnviroPlan levy and funding that's generated through that, we can manage and maintain it, and we can be sure of that going forwards.
Yes, and it would continue to form part of our strategy with respect to extending that wide corridor to the south for connectivity for particularly our fauna to traverse.
Yep, as I say, as I said, it forms, within Ipswich, it forms a major, a part of a major corridor there between there and Flinders. Yeah, which has large values that we can potentially improve as we go forwards, and that would be something we'd be looking to do, and was identified through the National Environment Strategy recently, earlier in the year.
Were any discussions had with regards to, so from state's perspective, with regards to the assets in Main Range National Park, extending that with respect to the Liverpool Range area?
Yep, certainly, it was certainly mentioned, and exactly as you said, understanding their priorities within this region is around that Main Range and how the Little Liverpool Range is an extension of that. They have got, I suppose, they're aware of that as a potential future national park, that would very much be in their hands. And from a tenure point of view, most of that is private land, so that would be up to them, I suppose, to pursue. But we floated that idea past them, and it was something that we're interested in and will continue to look at. We don't envisage anything happening in that space in the next few years, but it's something that they're looking at and will continue to look at, and we'll continue those conversations with them in regards to that venture potentially.
Yeah, and considering there are at least three local governments bounding on to that, that section of range, would be easier for state, but that's for state to decide, not us.
Exactly right, yeah.
Any other councillors have any questions? No? Thank you, Mr Smith.
Thank you.
Councillors, the recommendation is that the report be received and contents noted. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Fekner, seconded. Thank you councillor Quinsman. I'll open the matter for discussion.
May I? I thought there was some really useful to go through, what, what makes a national park. It has been something that has been discussed, why we don't have any, and I guess it's always the, the benefits that we can get locally versus costs, and I think we always have to weigh that up, so it's probably something good for us to look at, you know, every few years. But yeah, obviously we want to make sure that we have a great conservation areas, and yeah, so I thought this was a really good exercise to go through.
Thank you. Anything further? No? Then I'll put the motion, those in favour. Unanimous and carried, thank you. Item two is confirmation of minutes of the Environment Sustainability Committee meeting number six of 2023 on the 13th of July. Does any member of committee have any amendments or, no? I'll ask for a mover, councillor Fekner, thank you, and seconded councillor Quinsman. Open the matter for discussion, if there's any? No? I'll put the motion, those in favour. Unanimous and carried, thank you. Moving on to officers' reports, item three is environmental education, update and summary. This is a report updating on the implemented changes made following the environmental education review in 2021 to 2022, when a range of new programmes were introduced. These programmes were considered, designed and chosen to align more effectively and efficiently with our environmental and sustainability objectives in schools through the strategic use of resources. This report presents an overview of the programmes as part of our ongoing measurement and evaluation process through key outcomes from the different programmes implemented in 2022 to 2023, as well as a summary of their current advantages, challenges and associated recommendation for programme delivery in 2023 to 2024. Could I call forward appropriate officer to answer some questions?
Good afternoon Chair, Mayor and councillors, my name's Kimberly Hare and I'm the Environmental Education Project Officer.
Afternoon, thank you. Again, if you can just give us a, I know it's in the report, but just a brief outline. We have the list of environmental education programmes delivered in 22 to 23. Can you expand on just some of the detail?
Yeah, so we had a review in 2021 to 22, and it looked at kind of what we already did, and then potentially how we could maybe change or do things a little bit more effectively or efficiently. There's a few existing programmes, things like Kids Go Wild, which is a school holiday programme which has been around for a while. We have some spaces such as the Queen's Park Environmental Education Centre, which is a community asset where we can teach people about the environment. And then we have our estates and other places that we want to have activated and available, particularly for our schoolchildren. So the programmes presented in that report go through the different ways we have been, I guess, activating or delivering education programmes, as well as how we're supporting schools to do their own sustainability and education projects. And that's something we're passionate about supporting, that student-led changes within schools on being more sustainable is an effective and efficient way to, you know, enable change and behaviour change in schools.
So is my understanding correct in that it's geared more to enable schools to incorporate it as part of their curriculum for delivery?
Yeah, so potentially curriculum, and it is curriculum aligned because sustainability is a cross-curriculum priority, so it kind of fits everywhere. But part of it is even that on-the-ground things that schools do in their day-to-day practice, so talking about waste in particular. So having students practise sorting their waste as a day-to-day activity and getting that right is a really good way to embed that behaviour in that community and potentially take those behaviours home as well.
And pardon me, I do note that programmes are continuously reviewed, so I'm not saying that this is the way it's going to be forever moving forward. We do have that constant improvement as part of our focus of the way we operate as an organisation. Where would you hypothetically see possibility for the future?
So Queen's Park will probably be a priority focus for the next 12 months. As a space, we've been changing how we've been using it to be a real community asset and to be a really activated place where people can come, and particularly schools. So our growth in school numbers last financial year was quite significant, and I anticipate will be quite significant again. That also involves tying in more closely visits to the nature centre. We know that's a really popular space where students come, and we want to use that opportunity as a really good place to talk about messages around like habitat, diversity, and tying it more together with what we do at Queen's Park.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Committee, the recommendation is that the report on the environmental education programmes be received and noted. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Quinsman, seconded. Thank you councillor Fekner. Open the matter for discussion. Councillor Fekner?
Yeah, Chair, I just want to highlight to everyone that we're delivering this with a budget of $64,500 per annum, which I think is huge value for money in terms of being able to access so many of our youngest residents to start education in the early years is so important. I mean, there's so many scientific studies that back up the behaviour change needs to start earlier in life, and the way that we've been able to embed ourselves in the school communities, I think has been a huge and strategic position that we're now in to influence better outcomes across the LGA. I can see this growing, and I was really pleased to see that the report was quite self-reflective in that it had recommendations for the future, and it's thinking critically about the lessons learnt immediately after. And yeah, I've been to a few of these events, I've seen just the improvement in everyone's day-to-day lives and their mental health, let alone those outcomes for the environment by creating, you know, future environmentalists. Yeah, it's really great. For the money that we spend, we get so much value from our community in terms of community engagement, community education and caring for our environment. I mean, it's just perfect. So through you, Chair, I want to pass on my thanks to the CEO and the organisation for doing such a wonderful job.
Absolutely.
Obviously pass it straight on to the team, Chair, but thank you.
Yes, I totally agree councillor Fekner, in that when we have attended some of those events and engaging with the young people, you can see straight away, they are then providing that education when they go home, they're teaching their parents and caregivers how to care better for our natural environment, and particularly that sorting the waste thing. It's, I think data I have seen is where it's that the family with the younger, growing children, they are the ones who are time-poor when it comes to managing their household, and to have that knowledge embedded with the young people is outstanding. The, the outcomes from that, the young people are absolutely on board with the, the, the way they want to take on that information and engage. Also on councillor Fekner's point, CEO, may I also, through yourself, commend your officers for delivering such outcomes on a very lean budget, absolutely. Councillor Quinsman?
Thank you. I echo the comments that have been made. I was just looking at the national curriculum for students, and what we're doing is consistent with what is required. I'll just make that comment.
Yeah, I think that, that's an intentional move, so that teachers can take the resources that we create here and, and, you know, build a subject out of it, which brings it into the classroom. Those schools that participate more fulsomely than end up being participants in the summit, so it's kind of, there's a reward at the end of it all too, so it's improving educational outcomes. It's assisting teachers who are extremely time-poor by doing a lot of the back-end in the environmental subject for them, so that they can just get in the classroom and teach. So yeah, it's great. So, so many good things about these programmes that we run in the environmental space.
Yes, providing those contemporary and updated resources to professional educators, so they can provide that delivery is far better than council sending officers to every school. But also, there is the prospect of maybe an education centre at the, the New Southern Resource Recovery Centre, would be just floating an idea that as an option, that would be something that would be a benefit.
I like the idea, but I don't think it'd be as pretty as Queen's Park.
Think, think, think of, think of all those extra puppies they could take home from the animal management centre. Anything further? No? Then the recommendation as put, I'll put that motion, those in favour. Unanimous and carried, thank you. Item four, Experience Nature Forty Ways in Forty Days. This is a report concerning Experience Nature Forty Ways in Forty Days campaign, highlighting the success of the programme which was delivered between the 1st of May and the 10th of June 2023. Again, may I ask officer to come forward?
Thank you again Chair, Mayor and Councillors, Phil Smith, Natural Environment Manager.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Again, yes, the content and data is in the report, but could you give personalised detail on the success of, of the programme?
Thank you. Well, we heard from KIM in regards to our general environmental education programme and the review. I guess this was a, an attempt to have a focused and condensed forty-day programme, where we pulled together a lot of the projects, activities and bits and pieces that we do across the year, but into a nice condensed and focused forty days to get people in and out and experiencing nature. We heard previously about budgetary constraints, and what we found, or what we have found over the years is that spreading that thinly doesn't necessarily get the same impact, but if we can focus some of those events in a short space of time, we can get efficiencies in things like the advertisement, general word of mouth, put those out there in a single campaign, and yet get a lot of our messages out, and that's what we did, and we found it was very, very successful in regards to the amount of participants that came our way. It was an idea that we kind of borrowed from the UK, and I have had some involvement with back there, which was a similar campaign by the wildlife trusts out there. And again, it's using that kind of focused attempt to get people out and engaging across all different walks of life. You can tell by the, the numbers that we had engaged that it was pretty successful, and having that concerted effort meant that from a resourcing perspective, it was quite efficient and effective too. So some of the numbers we had were fantastic, especially with the onsite activities around Flinders and White Rock. Guided tours and walks are always very popular, and we're able to leverage those, those popular events to get our messages out from an educational perspective. I think you mentioned some of the events that you attended, but the Experience Nature Family Day, which was the culmination of the, of the week out at Flinders, saw fantastic numbers, it was a great day. We had a heap of sitting there doing talks and lively panel discussions, so we had everything from kids, young kids getting involved in activities on the ground through to, yeah, comedy debates and everything in between. It was really, really fantastic to see. As I say, the numbers reflect that, and it was a good example of how through reviewing and considering how we deliver our programmes and education, we can be more efficient and effective.
Absolutely. If I may say, you highlighted just part of the Experience Nature Family Day, bats versus bees versus birds. Honestly, the, the community environmental organisations that I attend, week on week, they are still talking about that. That was a very good part of the programme. I note that it states here that over 1,500 of the A3 hard copy activity calendars were distributed across the city. I, I couldn't keep up. I think, you know, I don't know how many boxes that were extra that divisional staff gained from, from your offices. I was asked for them everywhere I went and for, for them to be able to distribute out to people through their networks. So I, I think the, the promotion of it initially had, had definitely gained, gained reach and traction. And I think a lot of people across the city were, a lot of our residents were anticipating and looking forward to some of those events that, that were programmed. And having attended a few of them, yes, absolutely, the, the attendance rates were, were very high, so.
Yeah, and if I may, Chair, of those 1,500 that were distributed, I think we had around 1,200 registrations, so the conversion rate from distribution to registration was high. And then in terms of attendance, which is something we do struggle with, especially when you're running free events, a lot of people register and then don't turn up. But we had here proportionally, I think we had 1,145 total attendances, so again, the conversion rate was, was really good there, so we were happy with that. From distribution to registration to attendance, it was all, it was all pretty good.
I'll also note that in your next steps planned, that a survey is being developed to send all participants in the programme, gather feedback that will enable yourself and your officers to be able to further evolve the programme, I would say, and, and deliver better. and deliver better year on year.
Absolutely, yeah.
So have you had any, has that been formed yet?
No, we haven't got the report on that. We'll keep working through that in terms of then that, I suppose, adaptive management and cycling back to see how we can improve that. We can potentially present that as and when it comes through, if that's where we're alluding to.
Yes, I would absolutely look forward to seeing the data and the results back from that survey.
Certainly, thank you.
Any other councillors, councillor Fekner?
Oh, sorry.
My question's similar to that of you, Chair, but I'll be more direct. Are we going to do 40 Ways in 40 Days again? Is it something that the team is geared up to do, that we have the resources available to roll out? Or do you think it will be, or will look a little bit different? It won't necessarily be the same model?
Yeah, well, we can, but I think we are reviewing that going forwards. Again, keeping all the options on the table. It was pretty intensive. The figures speak for themselves, but we've just got to be conscious, I suppose, of resourcing. It's good from a, I suppose, an efficiency perspective to put all that effort into 40 days, but the teams were exhausted by the end of it. So we'll keep an eye on it. It may be slightly different, it may change. Whether it'll be exactly the same or not, I won't be able to call at this point, but it's something we're looking at. And I think the feedback will very much help steer what that will look like going forwards. If that's a very diplomatic, say, way of saying we're not sure.
Thank you, no, no, that's fine.
I think I was making the assumption, but I thought it was a good assumption.
Our partners in marketing, were they, was this art produced internally?
They're always part of the conversations in terms of getting those, the outward facing documentation in terms of leaflets, pamphlets and websites and Facebook, they're fantastic. We do a lot of the copy development in the team and then work with the marketing guys who are very efficient and effective in distributing that and using the channels that they know. And we also use our own networks to distribute information like that. But yes, we work very, very closely and they were fantastic in this respect. And we will, if we do it again going forwards, we'll be having those conversations nice and early with them so they're prepared for the workload that hits them.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely, I mean, this is, to my mind, it should be part of the city events programme and inadvertently it ended up being that anyway. But, you know, as a mainstay, something for, you know, the environment sustainability, I think absolutely needs to feature. It looked really beautiful. Honestly, the art was great. Yeah, all of the pamphlets that we handed out were so well received and, yeah, the community really got around it. So more of that feel good stuff, I think.
May Harding.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Mrs Smith, it was a great programme and I commend you and your team on it. And I just wanted to know what links you had with the city events and marketing team in doing the event?
Yep, so through the chair, essentially it was a, the concept idea and programme was owned by the, what was then Natural Environment and Land Management Section. And then in terms of the implementation, as I mentioned before, marketing material was all pushed out through them and worked with and through them. In terms of events, we did work collaboratively, but I think the city events programme was set up and is what it is at that time. So it was worked, I suppose, in parallel and not part of that city events programme going forwards and taking on board. And as has happened previously, where we have really successful events, we can have those conversations and try and embed them into that programme. We don't want to replicate or duplicate effort in that space and they're very good at putting on events. So as and when we can work with them and they can take courage of that, we can fit in. So that's probably conversations to be had going forwards if we were to do it again.
I was more looking at the fact that I'm not supposed to take it on or to put this on the city events. I was more looking at the fact that did you tap into the expertise of that team in regards to how we could advertise, market and what do we have, channel, you know, I guess, that topic, that expertise that that team have?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, again, through the chair, the marketing's all, so we dream our wonderful dreams and then we're told how to do it properly by the marketing team generally. That's how, that's how we generally work with them and they're fantastic in their resources. They exist in channels, everything that gets published goes through them. So we do use them, work very well in partnership with the marketing team, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay, thank you, Mr Smith. Committee, the recommendation is that the report on the Experience Nature 40 Ways in 40 Days programme be received and the contents noted. Do I have a mover? Thank you councillor Kunsman, seconded. Thank you councillor Fekner. I'll open the matter for discussion. Councillor Fekner.
Yeah, just again, Chair, I want to highlight the success that was 40 Ways in 40 Days. Events calendar, it certainly hit and struck a chord with many of my residents. They, and it just, it just looked beautiful. Like it felt like, you know, it didn't feel like this was a first year thing that Ipswich City Council was rolling out. It came across very professional and was just executed perfectly. I think some of the key events were blessed with absolutely beautiful weather too. So it just, you know, brings even more joy to the programme when you see some decent weather across as well. And to finish it off, down at Harding's Paddock was pretty brilliant. And I was very surprised to see that I could pet a crocodile there. Was, I didn't think that that was allowed. But yeah, apparently if they're shorter than a certain size, then particular people who are handlers are able to do that. So, you know, my nieces and nephews were very excited and I was very excited as well as a little bit scared. But again, just without being too silly about it, yeah, it was a great way to end the calendar of events. And I can't wait to see what we are able to produce next time around. Because it is something that I'll certainly be keeping a close eye out for and advocating for, particularly when there is such an uplift in community. We've seen that there's a huge push towards people wanting to protect our environment and these are really easy ways for them to get involved. Thank you.
Absolutely, again, I concur, the amount of community involvement and desire from community for these programmes is clear and evident. When we turn up to tree planting days and we run out of plants for people to plant because they're so enthusiastic that, you know, we have to zip off and grab some more, speaks volumes and we should congratulate our community for being so enthusiastic with their involvement and desires. Any further comments, discussion, note? And I'll put the motion, those in favour. Unanimous and carried, thank you. I have no notices of motion. Under matters arising, I would like to advise that at the, at next month's Environment and Sustainability Committee, scheduled for the 5th of September, we'll have a presentation from Mr Jonathan Gregory from Denmark Hill Buschke. Yeah, so for all the listeners out there, stay tuned next month. I have no procedural motions or formal matters, so thank you, committee members. I'll close the meeting at 1:54 and the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee will commence at 2:04. Thank you.